Terry Bell presiding, District 4 itself comes off for on my very. Please be standing for your prayer and the pledge of the flag.
I call the meeting of the Warren County Commission to order. I've got an announcement or two before we turn it over to the indication. I wish everybody would please keep Mr. Kenny Moffett. I spoke to him this morning. He had a medical procedure last night with a severe matter and will be coming home in the morning, hopefully during the thing keeps going good. And Mr. Charles Dotson is texting us at eight six, so please keep them in prayers. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Blaine Wiltshire for his guest for the indication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of District Four, Commissioner James Hines and myself, we would like to ask Sergeant Bobby Ashford to lead us in our prayer and then he will also lead us in our pledge after that.
Shout, we pray, our heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day and all many blessed of life blessed us with. We thank thee for our county officials, Lord, that we pray that our district commissioners will continue to serve our county and to uphold the things that they was elected to do. We pray that you will give them strength and courage to carry on the jobs, the difficult jobs that they have to do to help our community and our people. We pray that you would just bless them also. We pray that you would bless the sick, especially the ones that been mentioned here. We pray that you would bless them and others that are sick, Lord, throughout our community and our county. To be thy, we will restore them back to the normal, normal places in life. Lord, we thank thee for our military that is serving our country to protect our freedom and the freedom of others. We pray that you will be with them, Lord, as they serve our. And we also pray for our local National Guard that is serving. We pray that you would bless them, that they may do the service that they need to do, that they may stay out of harm's way and be returned back to their normal families, normal walks of life. Continue to bless this meeting, Lord. We thank thee for all the things that you've given us in this day as we ask this prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
All right, before he leads us in our pledge, I want to tell a little bit about his military background. This is, most of us know Bobby probably from chauffeur in Ryan Moore around. I seen him back there somewhere in the Christmas parade, but anyway. E-five Sergeant Bobby Ashford, he was in the US Army from nineteen sixty-three to nineteen sixty-six, serving most of his time in Germany. He was with the Twenty-Fourth Infantry Division Aircraft Mechanic and Crew Chief. He was honorably discharged with service medals and awards. He worked twenty-six years at the VA Hospital in Murfreesboro and retired with awards and honors from there. He's a twenty-six year member of the American Legion Post one seventy-three where he served as chaplain and with the Honor Guard for four years. He's also an eight-year member of the Royce Davenport Chapter One, 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 Two. He served four years as chaplain and one year as vice president. Bobby also helped place the Army Military Monument that's in our Veterans Hall in the Administrative Building, which was donated by Dr. Lila Northcutt and he continues serving our veteran organizations as well as multiple charitable organizations through his participation in car shows and cruise ends with his nineteen sixty-one Falcon. And just a few years ago, he came up in my sight when he became my daughter's father-in-law. But anyway, that's another subject. On behalf of the Warren County Commission, I want to thank Bobby for his service to our great country and our great county and its citizens. If you would, lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'll ask clerk, call the row.
Michael Bell.
Here.
Carl Bolden. Carleen Brown.
Here.
Charles Dotson. Randy England.
Here.
Steve Glenn.
Here.
Stephen Hilton. Brad Hillis.
Here.
James Hines.
Here.
Scott Kelly.
Here.
Ron Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Kenny Moffett. Cam Montgomery.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Gary Prater.
Here.
Chris Rippey.
Here.
Christie Ross.
Here.
Scott Ruble. Tommy Savage.
Here.
Donna Smith.
Here.
Philip Stout.
Here.
Cole Taylor.
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire.
Here.
All right, we'll move on to item number five, the adoption of a docket. Got here a motion? Got a motion, Mr. Savage, second by Mr. Prater.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to adopt, amend the docket and move the special proclamation after committee reports.
All right, we got a motion, I hear a second. So, Mr. Prater, all those in favor of amending the docket, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back on the original docket. All those that are in favor of approving a docket, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We've now approved our docket. If anybody has any public comment you want to make, please go back there and see Mr. Hillis and sign up and we'll go ahead with our rest of the meeting till we get the public comment. Number six will be reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion if we accept the minutes that are written and suspend the reading, please.
We got a motion by Mr. Savage, a second by Mr. England. All those in favor of approving the minutes is written, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on to our elected officials and departmental reports. The first one is Animal Control. I think we got Mr. Jeff Tubbs. Brandy wouldn't be able to be here tonight, so everybody's got the report from Animal Control. If you've got any questions, Mr. Tubbs will try to answer them.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about the Animal Control Shelter's report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tubbs, could you answer me a question, please? Are we euthanizing any animals at the Animal Control Center?
No, sir, absolutely not.
Have we been euthanizing any animals?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Okay, I just wanted to set that straight because I know we've had a few disgruntled people on Facebook, McMemble chatter, that are giving misleading information and I just wanted to set that straight.
Yes, I'm aware of that and we are not euthanizing animals.
Thanks, sir, I appreciate that.
Do you have a motion to approve the report?
No move.
Mr. Hillis, got a motion, a second, need a second. Mr. Prater. All right, any more questions for Animal Control? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Thank you, Jim. We'll move on to the Health Department. Ms. Fox.
Good evening. I have, you all should have your report, so I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Got a motion by Mr. Stout, a second by Mr. Glenn. Any questions about the Health Department report?
Has the drawings, the final drawings ready for the bid documents to go out come, come through yet?
We're still waiting on them to place, to be ready to put it for bid. We're waiting on the architects. He told Terry that hopefully it would be February first.
But he did say also tell me Thanksgiving and then he told me Christmas now or February first.
Yeah, so.
Which year, this year or next year?
Well, he doesn't say which one.
We sure hope it's this year, so it can be done by next year.
But the state is putting some pressure on them. They said that the documents will be ready by February the fifteenth at the latest because we're gonna have, we're gonna have to get to moving because we're gonna run out of time. So, we are continuously staying after them.
It was extended until December of next year, so that gave us a little bit, but.
Any more questions?
No.
All right, we have them. Yeah, we got a motion, a second, no more questions. All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. All right, Judicial Commission report, Mr. David Lee.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, you have my quarterly report. If you have any questions, we'd be more than glad to answer them at this time.
Motion approved. Got a motion, Mr. Savage, a second by Mr. Hillis. Any questions on the judicial commission report? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number five, Plan Commission Report, Mr. Ron Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our report was probably in this package and if there's any questions, anybody has, me and Steve will try our best to answer. Now, so move.
We have a motion for Mr. Lee, I hear a second. Mr. Glenn's got a second. Any questions for the Plan Commission? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on to the IDB report and statement.
Commissioner, it's actually Bill, you should all have our reports. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Ms. Need, I know you're aware we have lost some major retail in the past year, right here in Warren County. What is the IDB doing currently to attract retail industry? Because I know that's part of the IDB and for retail to be coming back into Warren County.
Thank you for the question. So, it was not in this report, but we had actually worked with the Chamber of Commerce to apply for a state program that was recently came out through ECD, which is called Retail Strategies. And we were one of the few communities that were approved for that program. So, basically what that does, it is a consulting firm that'll come in, they will work with us to do customized market data analysis on what retailers we have here, what our demographics are of our community, what retailers that we need, and then they will help us actually design a whole new retail recruitment strategy so that we can then go to ICSC and these other locations to work on recruiting those businesses that we might be missing out on right now. We have been contacted, related to some national retailers over the past five to six months. I know the city of McMemble has also been contacted and so there's certain projects that we're trying to work with on properties, but this, the Retail Strategies Program will be a very big benefit to us as far as getting that data in and seeing what we need and going after those businesses.
Any more questions? Your motion's approved. Got a motion by Mr. Savage, a second by Mr. Hillis. There's no more questions. All those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Cotton, the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them at this time.
We got a motion, Mr. Stout, a second by Casey Owens. Any questions about our financial report this month? Being none, all those in favor of approving the report, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on to committee reports and the first on the list is based in finance, Ms. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
All right, Building Grounds?
Only thing Building Grounds has to report, we have a meeting this Thursday at four-thirty in the conference room. That's all, I have a report.
All right, Economic Act, Culture and Leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The biggest thing economic agriculture wants to recognize is Warren County Fair being recognized as state champion fair. And other than that, we have nothing to report.
All right. Education, Ms. Carleen Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next Monday, the twenty-seventh at four o'clock, our committee will be meeting at the Warren County School Central Office and also that night, the school board has on their agenda for their school board meeting to pass a resolution in opposition directly to the Education Freedom Act and directly addressing Mr. Cheryl and Mrs. Bowling and asking them to reflect that the members of the Warren County School Board are in opposition to this act. Also, I think you would have seen that I did state in an email that they would be voting on this because the governor has that special session addressing several things, but mostly that particular act on the twenty-seventh. But he will be bringing that up, but it's been said that they're not going to vote on it until the twenty-ninth. So, there is more time if any of you want to respond directly and voice your opinion on that. Thank you very much.
Right now, Financial Management has nothing to report. We'll move on to Health and Welfare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to mention that, as you probably read in the paper, that we did extend the free adoption for another month. As I expected, our population stayed basically the same even though we adopted out nearly sixty animals, but it's worth it with the cold weather to give these animals an opportunity to hopefully be adopted. And I did want to speak a little bit on what Commissioner Taylor had spoken about. I haven't seen the negative post or anything about euthanasia, but it's probably stemming from our vote as a committee to allow Brandy to take the training to do euthanasia when necessary because we have about ten or so animals that have been there either over a year or are too aggressive to be adopted. And so, there probably will be some euthanizing going on at some point and everybody knows my stance is I do not want to put an animal down for population sake or convenience sake because our vets won't do it and that's why we're going to have to have Brandy trained in order to do that. Hopefully, eventually, we will address the causal problem, which is a continuing flow of animals being born in the county, but that's probably where that come from, Commissioner. I'm sorry, that's all I have.
Highway Bridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Week and a half ago, when we got three inches, Highway Department spread a hundred ton of salt and we've replaced that salt in the last few days. Thank you.
Policy and Personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policy and Personnel met on the seventh of this month and we accepted reports from our codes department and our judicial commissioners and we come to an agreement that we're going to try to start the meeting the first Thursday of each month. I'm trying to accommodate my members and everybody's very busy and we come to the agreement that that would be a good time. So, you'll be seeing something on the website about that in a few days. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all we got.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody pray for our EMS. People are still getting sick and this is bad weather and tough for them to get in and out. Pray for our sanitation department because garbage is still being produced and it's got to move, but other than that, that's in your report. Thank you.
County Correction Partnership, Ms. England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today at the jail, we have a population of two-hundred-and-forty-one. We have a hundred-and-eighty-seven males, fifty-four females, thirteen TDOC and three parole violations. Tonight will be, later on in our meeting, we'll be voting on a new telephone system for the inmates that they're using. I hope you guys will support that. And our meetings now are going to be consistently on the first Monday of each month at three-thirty and if you want to attend one, we'd like for you to attend one. And this next meeting, if you're interested at all, we're going to actually do a little touring in the jail so you commissioners that would like to see inside the jail a little bit more, we're going to look at some, a few items that we need to address and we're going to take a little tour. So, if you haven't seen it there in a while, you might want to come and go with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
As we done our docket, we moved up a proclamation we have tonight. It's an honor, a very special person in Warren County that's done a lot for the kids in our community and worked hard for the county for seven years. Mr. Dishman, if you come forward, I'll read this off and I'll come down there and present it to you. Whereas in nineteen ninety-five, James Barry Dishman came to be employed by Warren County Government and retired in December of twenty-four, twenty-nine years of service. And whereas Mr. Dishman's focus became the challenge youth of our community and throughout his diligence become highly respected across the state of Tennessee in the juvenile court system. And whereas James Barry Dishman, co-founder, a nonprofit organization we all know as Kids of the Community to help at RIS Youth in Warren County. And whereas, Mr. Dishman is a Paul Harris Fellow in the Rotary International, receiving the Paul Harris Fellow recognition and the Let Service Light the Way Award, two of the organization's highest awards for service in the community and organization. And whereas, twenty-six years of tireless dedication by Mr. Dishman throughout Kids of the Community reached untold numbers of at RIS Youth that through his leadership were kept out of the justice system and have become productive members of our community, some even reaching beyond the potential. And therefore, Mr. Dishman's contribution to the youth of our community is beyond measure and he stepped up to truly impact positive change in the lives of children and young adults, thus affecting all of our lives. I, Terry Bell, County Executive, Warren County, Tennessee, on behalf of a grateful community, do hereby declare January twenty-first to twenty-five to be James Barry Dishman across all of Warren County.
Thank you. I just want to say very briefly, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve all the children here. I've, as I look around the room, it seems like I bumped into everybody here in one way or another in doing this. It's a tough job, but you know, we've proven over the last several years, if we all pull together, it's just absolutely amazing what we can accomplish and I appreciate being recognized for this. I don't know that there's anything any more important than what we do at juvenile court than to deal, you know, with our youth and try to prepare them for tomorrow. It's difficult. It's difficult, we're dealing with everybody's baby and everybody's mom and dad, but I've done the best I possibly could do and I thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number nine. Do we have any public comment? No public comment tonight. We'll move right on into new business. Item number one, Mr. Randy England, the contract for the jail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Caught me off guard, I'm sorry. We have the contract for the jail, this phone services at the jail where the inmates get to call out, that will run out at the end of August and we had to get a new one in, so we are going with the company right now. It's going to be called Pay Tell. We have been working on this diligently for the last few months. We feel like this is the best plan of action and I just want to footnote one thing here. The things that they get to watch on their laptops, I want you to make a note of that. One thing we haven't got cleared yet and we hope we can, is it has been asked that some of the churches that would like to stream their church service in for them. We haven't got clarification on that. So, if you're asked about that, we don't have clarification on it as of yet, but we feel like that that weekend might make that happen at some point, okay? But this is coming up in September. We think it's a good plan, it's five years and it'll be, I think it'll be great for our facility at the jail. And I so move that we adopt this.
All right, we got a motion, a second by Ms. Casey Owens. Any discussion about this contract? This is something that's actually, they're making us actually change that by some laws the federal communications have passed, so we've had to do a new contract. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just thought we're not allowed like we are now. We make a little money. You know, we can't do that anymore.
Yeah, that's where this is stemming from, from the federal. Yeah, that's where this is stemming from, from the federal ruling. If there's no questions, I'll have the clerk call Rob.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes.
Item number one passes 19 to zero. We'll move on to item number two. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is Amendment 17, which is the setup to line items associated with a TCI Training Equipment Grant for the Sheriff's Department.
You got a motion, Mr. Stoudt?
Aye.
Got a second by Mr. England. This is another 100% grant that Jackie's able to give. Any questions about the budget amendment? Being none, I'll ask clerk to call Rob.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes.
Item number two passes 19 to zero. We'll move on to item number three. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment to establish the mental health transport grant for the current fiscal year and rollover last year's remaining balance. The fund balance portion is money we actually received from the state last year for these services. The $77,000 is new money. This is also 100% grant. I will have to point out that there's an error on the amendment. There is no estimated revenue code, and that should be 4699.
Everybody understand that? Do I have a motion to approve? I got a motion by Mr. Ross. Mr. Savage, any questions about this amendment?
Mr. Chairman, just to let them know that they were hoping to get a van, but this will be different than a 15 passenger van. This will be one that has got cages built in it, and that's one of the expense. So this will be cages so we can carry females and males at the same time.
That's what they're hoping to get. Uh, I'll ask clerk to call Rob.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes.
Item number two passes 19 to zero. We'll move on to the next, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Amendment 19. This is a 9D-10 grant for the sanitation department to purchase. It's a recycling equipment grant. It would be to purchase a new F-550 as well as the stuff to go with it to allow it to carry two boxes and a construction, a work bin.
Got a motion for Mr. Ballin, a second for Mr. Ballin. Any questions about this grant? Aye, aye, aye. None, I'll ask clerk to call Rob.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes.
Passes 19 to zero. We'll move on to the next, Mr. Cotton.
Uh, this is GF 20. This is just a reassignment of funds already with the end of clerk and master budget to a line item that is more accurately representative of the duties of the staff member who this is being paid, who is being paid out of these lines.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Michael Bell, a second by Mr. Hillis. Any questions about the amendment? Being none, I'll ask clerk to call Rob.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes.
Item number five passes 19 to zero. We'll move on to item number six. Last year, I asked the county court to pass a resolution so I could apply for some radios for the fire departments. We, it passed unanimously, and we did not receive that grant. But Upper Plumbon helped us with that. We missed it by two points. But they went back and talked to them, and we've got the opportunity to apply for the grant again. And I think there's a real good chance that we can get the grant, that I have to have a resolution with approval of this county court. So I can just redo it and what's already passed once. It's allowing me to refile that grant paperwork. I make a motion to approve. Second. I got a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. England. Any questions about the resolution? All right, I'll ask clerk to call Rob.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carlene Brown?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Scott Kelly?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Chris Rippey?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes.
Resolution passes 19 to zero. We'll move on to the approval of the notice.
This is the notary list. Bradley Covert, Juan Pablo Garcia, John David Hankins, Tim Lewis, Jordana R. Manson, Sandy St. Peter, Kathleen R. Pont, Casey White, Jamie Womack, William Forbes, Christie Y. Judkins, Susan K. Kelly, Violet Vargas, Polly C. Cantrell and Dawn Griffiths.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Stoudt, a second by Mr. Taylor. All those in favor of approving the notice say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We'll move on down to announcements, and I'll start off with Mr. Randy England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you guys know, about three months ago, you know, the Hurricane Helene come through and wiped out most of a lot of parts of North Carolina and little parts of Tennessee. We are, we sent a lot of stuff over there from this county, water, different things of that nature. And we've sent, Stephen Hilton took a truckload of clothes. I mean, it's just been phenomenal of the things that's happening. Well, you fast forward about three months, and a lot of them has been kind of forgotten about because, you know, it's just the kind of way things are. And it's not bad, it's just the way it happens. So it's been on my mind to help these people in some format. And so it come to me that I made some phone calls, come and find out they've got more water they know what to do with, they got more clothes than they know what to do with, and they got substantial, right now, okay on food. What they can't get is propane. They can't get propane in that area. So I took it upon myself to start a propane drive and get them some propane to these people. And so I've been asking for anybody that's got any extra tanks or let me borrow your tanks and I'll get them back to you sometime in March or April when the bad weather gets by us. But the community I'm helping is in Waynesville, North Carolina. It's a makeshift campground with 63 campers and 142 people on it with no running water, no electricity, no sewage. They're running 38 generators around the clock at about 150 gallons of gasoline a day. And it's just a, it's a sad situation. I spent the day over there this past Saturday, and I hauled 59, I hauled 256 gallons of gas over in 2059 containers. And so these people wouldn't freeze this week. I took some, Stephen Hilton had some stuff left over his trip, and I carried everything he had from toilet paper to paper towels and that kind of thing. So if you feel led and you want to help me on this mission, we're going to be doing this until, well, at least through March. So Warren County's been very well represented, good there. They don't know nothing about Warren County, but I'm trying to tell them about it. And these people are, you know, it's a very low income area, so it's a very hard, there's no, no flat land over there either. Everything's up, down, hills where I'm going. So it's been very hard, but we spent the day over there Saturday. It's about a five and a half hour drive, so it's very hard on us to get there, but I want to keep doing this. Right now, it's going to be every two week event, trying to go over there and help them. Had a conference call with them today, and they don't have nowhere to cook very well. I mean, I could go on and on and on, but if you can help me in any way, I'd sure appreciate it. And, but I want you to know that the people of Warren County, what little bit I put on Facebook, it's just been, it's blown my mind what, how people has really helped, stepped up. We live in a great community. Y'all just don't realize it. We live in a great community. I mean, we do. People, people take care of you. I don't care if you're, if you're sick, you're probably going to get a pie. You know what I'm saying? It's just the way it is. And people take care of people. It don't matter if you live out center town or if you live wherever. And I just love living here, and I'm so proud to tell people that I'm in Warren County, and we're being very well represented over there in Waynesville, North Carolina.
Uh, Mr. Wiltshire?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody should have a copy of this. I was contacted, and some of you may have been contacted, contacted as well by this Ms. Ava Ackerman with the Partnership for Patient and Doctors' Rights. If you would, look over that. And basically, to, to put it in a nutshell, they're looking for support for anti-obesity drugs to be covered under Medicare and Medicaid, which I think is a good cause, because if it prevents or reduces obesity, that lowers our insurance cost. And so if you want more information about this, let me know. I can forward you the contact, but there's a survey with our email that you can go in and basically voice your support. And then you can also email your state reps and, and support it that way as, as well. So when they vote on this, they'll know where you stand. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I've got a letter here from Mr. Bratcher. Mr. Athene's decided to, it's for his Human Resources Policy and Procedures Handbook for Warren County Sheriff's Department Amendment to Time Off and Accrual Policy. Please let this letter serve as confirmation that the attached amendment to the time off and accrual section of the personal policy governs the Warren County Sheriff's Department meets the minimum criteria required by TCA Code 5-23-104 pursuant to CCA Code 523-103 and TCA Code 523-106. Adoption and implementation of this policy is a sole constitutional office of the sheriff for Warren County of Tennessee and is accomplished by the inclusion of the attached amendment in the minutes of the January 21st, '25 meeting of the Warren County Commission and filing of the same with the office of the county clerk for Warren County, Tennessee. Mr. Robert Bratcher reviewed this, and I need to spread all the minutes to, for him to amend his handbook. There's one more, a couple more announcements I got. Each elected official is required to fill out a conflict and interstatement. Those will no longer be sent out by paper. They will have to be done by email on the internet. So if anybody's having trouble with those, they have to be filled out by January the 31st. And if you're having trouble with them, come by our office, but don't wait till the 31st to come by, because we may not be able to call anybody if you're having trouble. But we'll be glad to help you. Jason, Emily or myself will be glad to try to help you get that filled out. So everybody remember, remember that. And the only other announcement I have is when you go outside, be really careful. The smelting went on today, and the waters run off the roof, and it's on the pavement out there, and it's turned into ice, which we were unaware of. And of course, ice won't work in being this cold outside now. So that's all the announcements I have, Chairman.
On what you were talking about there, the form that you got to fill out, I've got mine done, but if you don't, you can't say you didn't get the email. You can read on the form now. It says, "We are not responsible that you did not get this email." And, and you could be fined several hundred dollars if you don't get this back in in time. And, and they're serious about it. Thank you. So if you're, if you've not got it done, please get it done and give us a little time so if we have any problems, we can get it checked in. Anybody else have any more announcements?
Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn. I got a motion from Mr. Taylor?
I'll move.
Got a second from Mr. Prater. All in favor, say aye.